I do. All right, we'd like to welcome you all to our board meeting here, May 17th, 2022. Declaration of a quorum, seven members present. Welcome to the meeting, this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we all come, we all have come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in an upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That brings us to item C. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. To this evening, we have students from Oakwood Intermediate and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School to lead us in our pledges in Moment of Silence. So I ask that those respective principals come forward with their students, Mr. Espidia, and there's Mr. Simak. I couldn't find his head. Mr. Simak, if you will come forward also. Welcome, Mr. Simak. How are you? Very good.
All right. Good evening, good evening. I am very excited to have two fantastic Wildcats with me here this evening. To my left is more rushing a fifth grader and to my left is a sixth grader, Annabelle Robinson. I'm going to let them introduce themselves. They are fantastic Wildcats, and you're going to get to hear that from them right now.
Hi, my name is Maura Rushing. I'm a fifth grade student at Oakwood. I enjoy gymnastics, volleyball, and spending time with my friends and family. My favorite subject is art with Mrs. Stone.
Hello, I'm Annabelle Robinson. I'm a sixth grader at Oakwood Intermediate. I enjoy swimming. I work in the library as a library aide. My favorite subject is social studies, and I enjoy swimming in my free time.
Good evening. My name is Omar Spethia. I'm the principal at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, and it's my pleasure tonight to bring at Siri Satello, who is an eighth grade Bobcat all the way from Bobcat Country. I'm going to go ahead and let her introduce herself.
Hello, my name's Siri Satello. I'm an eighth grader. I am Consolidated Middle School. I like to play soccer. I'm usually a goalkeeper, and then favorite color is purple, and my favorite subject would probably be science with Ms. Keshaw.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And now for a moment of silence.
Stay right there, Mr. Horak. You're not quite done. C2 Student Recognizations. We have a number of student recognitions this evening. Students, when Mr. Glenwinkle calls your name, if you will, come up to your right, meet me over there for your certificate, and if you will, shake hands with all the board members. Once we take care of everyone from each particular group, then we'll pause for pictures at that time as well. So, Mr. Glenwinkle.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Mr. Horak, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here again to recognize some outstanding student accomplishments in College Station ISD. Just to like to point out that this has been a record-setting year for our CTE programs and the co-curricular activities that they participate in, and these two groups of students are just another fine example of that. The A&amp;M Consolidated Veterinary Science Team recently won the state FFA championship and will represent Texas at the national contest. In FFA contests, there are no classifications like there are in UIL. Regardless of school size, every team in the state competes against each other. The national championship will be held in conjunction with the 95th National FFA Convention and Expo on October 26th through 29th in Indianapolis. These contests, these contests, known as career development events, build on what is learned in agricultural classes and encourage members to put their knowledge into practice. More than 18,588 students begin the statewide tournament in 29 different events, which reflect classroom instruction in basic technical, leadership, interpersonal, and teamwork skills. As I call your name, state champion veterinary science team members, please come forward to receive your certificate and be recognized. Abigail Cumencheck. Not only is this a team competition, but individuals are recognized for placing at certain levels. And the 14th high point individual, along with being a team state champion, Megan Downey. And having the best score in the state of Texas, the high point individual is Mr. Luke Sanders. This team is coached by A&amp;M Consolidated High School Career and Technical Education Teacher, Hannah Lewandowski. So our next group of students, I'm going to read a little something here about their accomplishment. A pair of CSISD business students won the national championship in their respective events recently at the 2022 National Business Professionals of America Leadership Conference in Dallas. In addition to the national champions, several other students from College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School placed in the top four in their respective events and open events offered at the contest. Students must compete and advance through multiple levels of competition to qualify for nationals and contests, which test the skills learned through business education courses. So as I call your name, please come forward. The national champion in business law and ethics and also a fourth-place finisher with the Economic Research Team, Gideon Ong. The national champion in Java programming, Will Wang. Third place in advanced spreadsheet applications, Arriba Moeman. Fourth place with the Economic Research Team, Forrest Liu. And also, fourth place with the Economic Research Team, Abigail Wilson. The teachers that make all this possible for these students are BPA advisors from the two high schools, Shanika Brooks. Dawson Dear. How about one more round of applause for this fantastic group of students and educators? Mr. Martindale, this concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Very good. Thank you.
We'd like to recognize the artwork there at the back of our boardroom from the kiddos at Oakwood Intermediate and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. So make sure you take a look at that and see all the artiste's we have here in CSISD doing a fantastic job. That'll bring us to item D1, Board Reports and Superintendent Update. Any board reports? Anyone want to start?
DIC met May 11th last Wednesday. We, the committee approved, or council approved, the 2022-23 DIP goals, which are on H3 consent agenda, and then we will again meet June 8th to discuss ESSA funding. So while the rest of the committees are off, DIC will be at it.
Well, I can, many of you already know, we had a wonderful Education Foundation event last night with the scholarship award ceremony. I know many of us were there to celebrate 115 seniors getting scholarships of over $154,000 from Education Foundation. And as always, they, the folks that Teresa and her team put together, just a wonderful evening for everybody. It was really nice to recognize, obviously, both the students, but also all the donors, you know, that have made these, made the scholarships possible. And then one other bit of news from Education Foundation is that this year they hit a big milestone with the foundation. This was the first year that they brought in over a million dollars in one year through their, their hard work. I mean, that is just amazing. Some of that is set aside for future scholarships and endowments, but over three-quarters of that went back to the district, back to our students and back to our teachers. So again, just so much kudos to what that organization has done, you know, over the past two decades. Thank you, Teresa. That's a big one. Other, you may be talking about it, Mr. Martindale, but the other thing is that the Strategic Design Committee is going to be pulled back together tomorrow for kind of a review of what's been going on behind the scenes over the last, last year and talk about the progress and work towards the goals and then kind of what are the, the next steps. So I'm looking forward to that. I know some of us will be there for that as well.
Are you going to talk about the bond committee?
I can.
Well, I was just going to say that the bond committee is going to reconvene later this month to consider the Proposition D bond that did not pass this past fall, and that'll be coming up at the end of the month.
I can do pack. We discussed the income tax withholdings, which is back on track, thank goodness. Compensation regarding covering classes and extra duty pay was discussed. Purchasing order turnaround time, just because the money is there, we still have to make sure the purchases are appropriate. So I know sometimes it takes longer than people like. Elementary grading guidelines, we're working through it with collaboration. Engage Your Campus, if you're interested. Reporting Ethics Concerns, the Employee Handbook is your first resource. And as we touched on at workshop, worth commenting on and more we'll get into tonight. But the TASB salary study, so looking at comparison districts, you know, making sure they're comparable multiple ways, geography, challenges, openings, et cetera. How are other districts giving raises? Their fiscal year ends at different times. There's tax ratification elections, which requires voter, voter approval, federal relief funds, which were discussed, reduction of positions or not filling new vacancies, students-to-staff ratios, all that factors in. And with that, I just want to comment that having spent seven months on the board and seeing what everybody has been through the last two years, I want to commend our teachers and staff. While everyone has been impacted, not just those in education, our school district has made decisions in the best interests of the students. Coming out of the, out of the pandemic, teen depression, anxiety, and suicide rates across the country are higher than they've ever been. Fortunately, last fall, we chose to open our schools to in-person learning, giving our children the normalcy they needed and the opportunity to see and interact with teachers and friends. Given all the teachers and staff have been through, there are two things they need more. The two things that they need, more time and more pay. While I can't control their time and additional classroom responsibilities, I can advocate for their pay. We are lagging behind our peer school districts, in particular, the five to 10-year mark, which is nearly 10% behind our peer districts. This is when we often lose good teachers to other districts or other industries. While everyone is impacted by rising inflation, not just educators, it feels like a pertinent time to do all we can to take care of teachers and staff and find a way to increase their salaries.
Any others? Mr. Martindale.
All right, thank you. And to follow Dr. Payne, we have a budget workshop to start digging down into the compensation piece. Again, mark your calendars.
I'll be there.
Board, March 31st, 4:00 p.m. So I couldn't agree with you more, and our work as a team of eight begins at 4:00 on Tuesday the 31st. Other items of note, Southwood Valley, Phase 1 of their two large renovations begin as soon as the kids exit next Thursday. I think, I'm looking for Mr. Hall. He may already be at Southwood Valley waiting to start. There he is. But that'll, that'll take place, there are two phases, and it will occur over two summers. So they are ready and positioned to get that going as soon as school ends over at Southwood Valley and the renovations of the elevation and the interior. We're also going to be doing, I believe, four different restroom pod renovations at Consol. Of course, Consol has, is the most comprehensive of the renovations and will likely take three to four summers, but we'll get started with quite a few of the restroom renovations there as soon as we hit June. Also, we've had several planning meetings, a couple regarding Phase 1 of the CTE Center, the Ag Center. So we're tracking accordingly on that and hope to be moving some dirt around on that item late fall. Another item that, if we don't make the 31st of May, we'll make the June, we'll be approaching the board to approve the purchase of the CTE canopies that were a part of the bond, November 21 bond as well. So some of that work will initiate through the course of summer as well. That's to expand the covered working area out the back of both high schools for our CTE programs that are growing significantly. As Mr. Ben mentioned, the bond committee that did the work and brought together the four different propositions for vote of consideration, November of '21's reconvening. They're reconvening toward the end of the month as well on the 31st, and we're going to have some good hearty conversation about Proposition D that failed, that has to do with renovations and additions to Tiger Field House, as well as the press box and sound systems at Tiger and Cougar Field. So we're going to review those, have some conversations, review some polling data, and it's very likely that come the June board meeting administration will be asking the board for, or coming with a particular recommendation associated with Proposition D in consideration of possibly in November of this year to voters again. We'll see how that conversation goes on the 31st. Again, kudos to Ms. Spenden. That was a wonderful ceremony last night, and I know Ms. McAdams has already touched on that, but thank you and your team for your tireless efforts and the wonderful job that all of you do. Will mention to the board, and everyone's invited, Thursday, 6:00. This Thursday, Grace Bible Church, Southwood Campus, right across from Consol, is our employee awards, starts at 6:00 p.m. So you may want to be there a few minutes early. I didn't say, Mr. Ben. I just happen to be looking this way. 5:45-ish, and we'll meet down the front toward this.
5:30 it is.
5:30 it is, toward the sanctuary, and we'll start promptly at 6:00 p.m. Also, board members, let me mention this to you, and we'll be adding some additional information in the transmittal graduations next week, full slate of graduations. College View High School next Thursday at Rutter Auditorium. We'll be getting in touch with you as far as information for parking passes. That ceremony starts at 7:00 p.m. I would recommend your arrival by 6:30. Ms. Horn will have the appropriate robes there for all of us for that particular graduation. You'll take your robe with you afterwards. On Friday, we have College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School at 4:00 p.m. and 7:30 at Reed Arena respectfully. Now, something's a little bit different this year. In the past, we were typically the only two ceremonies at Reed Arena, Reed Arena on that first day. I believe Tom Ball is there before us on Friday. So I tell you that and that you may plan ahead also because you're going to be encountering the previous ceremony exiting as we're getting in for College Station High School. We experienced that between the 4:00 and 7:30, but we typically haven't had to deal with it going into the 4:00 ceremony, so please plan accordingly for that item also. Student celebrations, we saw a couple here earlier this evening, the veterinary science team, congratulations to those students from A&amp;M Consolidated, as well as our two national champions in BPA that we recognized earlier. We did have three of our student athletes, girls medal at the state track meet in Austin, and we have some continued baseball playoffs on Thursday night. Cougar baseball will be playing Brenham in game one on Thursday. We do have Strategic Plan Committee reconvening tomorrow at 8:30 at Transportation Center. We will be taking a look and reviewing the work on the identified specific results this year, and also be looking and projecting forward as to what specific results we may bring aboard for a year to work. So with that, Mr. Horak, that completes superintendent's update.
All right. That will bring us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. During this time, public comments are welcome. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks that those addressing the board refrain from any derogatory comments. Do we have any other cards, Ms. Horn? Okay, I do have one card here. We'd like to welcome Misty Carter, please.
I'm Misty Carter. I spoke to the board earlier this evening during the workshop regarding the new proposal for the GPA policy changes. At that time, I urged the board to ensure the revisions that were suggested by myself and other parents and interested parties were included in the proposed plan that Tiffany Parkinson presented. I'm so pleased to report that Mrs. Parkinson did in fact include those revisions. Again, I appreciate her time and effort in listening to our concerns about our current seventh graders and the students that will follow. I also want to thank Chrissy Hester and board member Kimberly McAdams for talking with me about my concerns directly. Earlier today, I attended the AMCMS PTO meeting, as I do every month, and many of our members were aware of these changes that were going to affect for our seventh graders. A concern that we discussed following the meeting was what about Tier 1 AP courses? What will our seventh graders have available? And so to that point, I just wanted to reiterate a suggestion I made or a point I made in the earlier meeting was that the number of AP courses available to our current seventh graders will vary based upon the path they're currently on. So some seventh graders will begin taking Tier 1 AP 6.0 courses much sooner than other seventh graders, based on the choices that parents have made under our current system. And those students will have more Tier 1 AP opportunities to choose from when we're calculating the new weighted GPA. For instance, a student who is currently in Algebra 1 as a seventh grader, which is a Tier 2 5.5 class, will take Geometry, a Tier 2 5.5 class, in eighth grade. Those students will then take Algebra 2 as ninth graders, which is a Tier 2 5.5 class, and pre-Cal as a 10th grader, also Tier 2 5.5. Those students are then eligible to take up to three, maybe more, of the AP 6.0 Tier 1 courses and math topics. Most of those students that aren't on this fast math track will be unable to take those Tier 1 AP 6.0 courses until they're juniors, maybe not even until they're seniors, and of course, not by the time you use the Calculate GPA for the college application process at the end of the junior year. Similarly, in the language courses, students who are in dual language would be in Spanish 2 as seventh graders, 3 as eighth graders, and start Spanish 4 AP, the Tier 1 course, as ninth graders. And that's something that we just need to consider and educate our parents on. Under the proposal, parents need to be informed that their elections, such as enrolling in dual language in kindergarten or taking accelerated math path, which usually begins in fifth grade, will affect the timing and number of these Tier 1 AP courses that are available in high school. In talking with Mrs. Parkinson, my understanding is they're already thinking about those offerings for AP Tier 1 courses, which I appreciate. I encourage this expansion, and I also encourage more robust communication with parents about the policy and how decisions made early in a student's education could impact their ability to enroll in AP Tier 1 6.0 courses. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That will bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are item G, item H3, H4, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, K1, and K2.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Ben. We have a second by Mr. Payne, Dr. Payne. Any other discussion? Any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to item H1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Related to Board Policy IC Local Regarding Academic Achievement and Class Rank. Mr. Martindale.
For a repeat appearance, we have our Executive Director of Secondary Education, Ms. Tiffany Parkinson. Ms. Tiffany Parkinson.
Good evening, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, and members of the board. I have a quick refresher on the main points that are being recommended as revisions by the committee before we take a moment to ask you to take some potential action on these revisions. So we know that multiple means of representation is the best way to learn, so I'm at least bringing you a presentation that looks different than what I showed you earlier and throughout the process. This is actually part of the parent communication chart. So there are three main categories in which the recommended revisions are within the policy. One of those is within the weighted grading system, and the committee is recommending that we move from a two-tiered weighting system to a three-tiered system. Tier One courses would be advanced placement courses, Tier Two, locally designated advanced courses, ineligible academic dual credit courses, and Tier Three would be all other eligible courses. Those would be at 6.0, 5.5, and 5.0 weighted grading tiers as well. The second category is in regards to the calculation piece or the courses that we would include in the grade point average for class rank, which remember is that the whole purpose of this policy is to establish those parameters. So the committee recommends that the students' GPA used for class rank would include the eight highest semesters from each of the four core subject areas. So that would be English, Math, Social Studies, and Science, and the two highest semesters of languages other than English. In addition to courses taken during the school year and CSISD grades in those categories that are listed, such as summer school credit by exam correspondence and distance learning, would also be eligible to be included for Tier Three if they fall in under those realms of four core and languages other than English. The third area is local graduation honors. In this area, the committee recommends that we apply our previous GPA cut points for local graduation honors to our new Tier Three tiered system. So that would have our summa cum laude graduates be those earning a 5.0 or above, our magna cum laude graduates 4.8 to 4.99, and our cum laude graduates 4.79. Additionally, I'd like to remind you all that there are some additions that our TASB policy consultant has asked us to add regarding the highest ranking graduate and ranking ties language, and this is in both our current policy for current high school students and then in the revised policy as well. And with that being said, we, as the administration, would recommend that the board adopt the committee's revisions to Policy EIC Local as presented. Also of note to those in the audience, the full policy is linked in the board agenda. Should you like to do a little light reading on that?
Any questions for Ms. Parkinson?
No questions. Can I move that we adopt the Policy EIC Local changes as presented?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. McAdams. We have a second by Ms. Nolan. Any other discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
I do want to discuss, or not really just comment. I mean, again, I've said many times the thank yous to everybody who participated in this over the nine-month period. It was a lot of hard work, but again, I think it was so important that we did this. I think our system is going to be more fair, which was very, is very important. I think it also is going to do what a GPA system needs to do, which is to recognize academic success and the rigor when we have it. I also think the new thing, the really good things it's going to do is it's going to support, you know, some of the values that we've laid out, you know, in our strategic design plan, really giving our students some more freedom and opportunity to really explore areas of their interest. And I mean, that is the hope of me, and I really believe a lot of the committee behind that. So I really hope that happens. It's, all that said, I think there's so much good. We all know it's a huge change. We've been under the old system for so long that, yes, it will, there will be some growing pains and some adaptation. There will be more learning along the way, but I think, again, I think it's a wonderful thing that we are doing for our district, and I, again, wholeheartedly support the efforts and the changes.
If I can echo what Ms. McAdams said, this is long overdue and benefits our students. So I know it was a lot of, we kept starting at step three and then one, seemed like every presentation, then two, and then four.
Not all of us need to go in order.
Right, yeah. So thank you for a year's worth of work to get this done because this benefits our students, and it's long overdue because it was such a big job to tackle. So I commend everybody for being a part of that.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep saying the same things. Thank you for all the work. And personally, I mean, I, you know, I was a little bit, I was kind of a slow adopter on this. So I appreciate all of the explanations and the conversations and just the thought that went into this from the committee. So thank you. And also, I'm a little, I wish that all of my kids could have been in on this, you know? I do think that this is going to be very beneficial for our students in our district. So I do. No, no, I'm not having any more kids. No, 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 I'm done. But thank you again for your work, to you and the entire committee. No.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Parkinson.
Thank you.
That will bring us to Item H2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Related to the Adoption of Instructional Materials for Health and Physical Education. Mr. Martindale.
Here with additional information on this agenda item is our Director of Instruction and Leadership Development, Mr. Jeff Mann.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I appreciate the time to come to you this evening to follow up on our information that I shared with you last month regarding Proclamation 2022. So tonight, your responsibility of the board is set forth by House Bill 1525 is to ensure that as a district, we have followed the processes and we've made sure that we've taken into consideration the law and done everything that we're supposed to do. And so I'm going to go over that timeline with you, and then at the end, if you guys are prepared to make a vote, then you can have that vote at the end. Okay? So as far as the timeline goes, January 12th of this year, the board authorized the Shack to be a part of the adoption process. And so then the Shack officially became a part of that process as required. And on February 28th, the Shack reviewed the work of the subcommittee that was formed to review over the instructional materials for human sexuality instruction. And then on March 7th, we held two public meetings where the public was invited to come and review and provide input regarding the instructional materials. And then on March 23rd, the Shack reconvened, and they developed their recommendation that was presented to you guys in the April board meeting. And you received that recommendation on April 19th from the Shack. And then on that Friday, April 22nd, I shared via transmittal the link and information for you guys to be able to access the materials for yourself to look through as you so chose. And it brings us into this evening, just to make sure that you guys understand where we are as a district with the current policy in place. We currently follow the first four items that are listed on there, and we do not utilize item number five because currently we do not have curriculum that includes contraception and condom use and human reality rates, and so we do not teach it in our practice. If you recall, these are the items that I shared with you last month that we are recommending for adoption. And the last two items that are there under health for middle school and high school, the Good Heart Wilcox materials, do include an option for those materials if the board so chooses to vote for us to adopt those materials. And the Shack recommendation was for the board to adopt the materials that are a part of the human sexuality instruction. This is a reminder that parents opt in to any of these topics regardless of number five. And there are several different teacs that are related to human sexuality instruction. And so we will ensure that the opt-in process is in place regardless of what the board vote is this evening. And as far as the administration recommendation for you this evening, we wanted you to know that we took the input and feedback from our teachers that were involved in the process, community members that came and spoke, the Shack membership. We had a thorough review of the State Board of Education recommended health and PE materials, and we also know that we have a requirement to make sure that parents are able to opt in to any of these topics that are taught in our middle school and high school health classes. And so with that, our administrative recommendation for the board is for you to adopt the instructional materials for health and human physical education as presented. So I'm going to turn it over to you for you guys to have your discussion.
I move to adopt the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Decker. We have a second by Dr. Payne. Any discussion?
So I have a quick question, and I know we talked about it last month, but I just want to make sure I'm remembering this correctly. So with the opt-in, parents are like we got access to the materials. Parents are given access to that material to be able to see it, yes? Before they choose?
What we provide to parents is a part of, is an outline of, these are the topics, these are the things that we teach. It's not the access to, now, they, their child, if they're enrolled in the course, they can see what's in the materials if they choose. Like, they can use their child's login information. But what we will provide to them at a minimum of two weeks before we even teach any items that fall under this is the notice of, this is what we're going to teach, this is what we're going to cover, this is when we're going to do it, and then they have to explicitly sign giving permission for us to do that with their child.
Okay. I just, I personally really liked being able to go through it because, I mean, I read through it quite a bit of it, and as a parent, it will help me have discussions with my kiddo. So I really liked having access to it. So for those that, you know, other parents out there, they're wrestling with this. That's all. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Mann.
All right.
That will bring us to Item I, Personnel. I1, Consider Approval of New Administrator Contracts as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, and board members. We have five administrative contracts being recommended this evening. Since there are five, I'm going to stick to the script as much as possible. Y'all know how well I do that, though. So we want to begin with Dr. Stormy Hickman. The recommendation is for Dr. Hickman to be named Executive Director of Elementary Education. I shouldn't make her stand during this whole time. Dr. Hickman, where are you? Please stand. Thank you. For the last three years, Dr. Hickman has served as the district's Director of Talent Management in the Human Resources Department. Previously, she was principal at Spring Creek Elementary School from 2015 to 2019. Dr. Hickman has also served administrative roles with Stent as Assistant Principal at both A&amp;M Consolidated High School and Greens Prairie Elementary School. Dr. Hickman, you have any guests? Just want to make sure.
Yes, I do.
Just your fam, right? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Hickman. Mr. Horak, for the record.
Are we not doing the three-minute speeches?
No, that's only for those that we're hiring from outside.
Outside the district, that's right.
Everybody else has done it. Mr. Starnes will have to do this. Did Ms. Parkinson tell you you had to do that? Oh, he's going to fit in well here, obviously. Okay. And next, and we'll go through all these and handle it with one action. Yes. Next, Director of Athletics, Kevin Starnes. For the last two years, Kevin has served as Director of Athletics in Grapevine-Colleyville ISD prior to his work in athletic administration. Kevin served three years as an Assistant Principal and three years as Associate at Colleyville Heritage High School. He's also served since coaching basketball, cross-country football, golf, tennis, and track at Royal High School, Kempner High School, Alvarado High School, and Grapevine High School. To Kevin Starnes. And now, Kevin, I know you do have guests, so you better make sure and introduce your family, or me and you both will be in trouble.
My wife, Kayla. She's hopefully coming on in the district as well. She's a teacher. And then my two daughters, Kirby, she's currently in fourth grade, and then KJ is currently in third.
Very good. We're excited to have you guys. So every principal in here, when you mentioned your wife's a teacher, looked right at her. So just understand that. Yeah, there she is, guys. Hey, Kevin, we're very glad to have you guys joining our family. All righty, Josh Simak. Mr. Simak, there he is. All righty, Director of Human Resources. All righty, Director of Human Resources. Mr. Simak has been the principal of Oakwood Intermediate School for the past six years. Prior to that, he was Campus Assistant, seven years, excuse me, six and two-thirds, three-fourths, I don't know, okay. Prior to that, he was Campus Assistant Principal at Pebble Creek Elementary and College Station Middle School. Before these administrative roles, Mr. Simak served as teacher and coach both in College Station and Port Lavaca ISDs. Mr. Josh Simak.
Oh, that ain't right.
Mr. Simak, stand back up. Introduce your wife. We know her, but you need to do introductions.
My lovely wife, Simak, Assistant Athletic Director.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Simak. All righty, and next we have Riverbend Elementary, Ms. Heather Sherman. Heather is currently the Assistant Principal at Riverbend, where she's held that post since 2019, when the campus opened. Prior to becoming the Assistant Principal at Riverbend, Heather served in the same role at Southwood Valley Elementary from 2014 to 18. Before entering campus administration, she taught both in Hearn and Avisoda ISDs and has experience as a literacy specialist and instructional coach. Ms. Heather Sherman for position of Principal at Riverbend Elementary. Introductions, absolutely.
My husband, Eddie, he is not a teacher. My son, Noah, who's an 11th grader at College Station High School, and my other son, Ethan, who is a 7th grader at the middle.
Very good. Thank you, Heather. And we have Ms. Ashley Stevens, Assistant Principal, A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. Ashley currently serves as Literacy Instructional Specialist for, excuse me, I will get this, for grades K through 5 in Spring Branch ISD. She also hosts teaching experience in Aldine ISD, where she also served as a teacher leader and facilitated professional development at the district level. Ms. Ashley Stevens. And Ashley, you have someone with you as well.
Yes, this is my husband.
Is he a teacher?
Not a teacher.
Oh, okay. Mr. Horak, those are my recommendations for the respective positions. Very excited about these folks taking on new roles and joining our school district. Tremendous confidence in their leadership ability.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Ben. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations. That will bring us to item J, J1, Consider Approval for the Purchase of Student Devices from Avanex through DIR Co-op Contract Number DIRTSO 4159 in the Amount of $324,870 utilizing 2021 Bond Funds. Mr. Martindale.
With specifics related to this particular purchase, and item J1 is our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Amy Dross.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, and members of the board. So, tonight, we'll bring forth information regarding student devices that will be purchased with Proposition B of the bond that was approved back in November. That proposition was about a little over $4.5 million, and would be used for personal devices, including student devices. So, the Technology Department did some research to determine what device would be best for our students, trying to balance educational needs, functional use, as well as durability. So, they made that selection, put it out for proposal or quotes, and received two viable quotes. I will mention, this is the second purchase related to these student devices. There was 2,000 units purchased in January, or authorized in January by you as trustees. So, they were 714 devices, with Avanex being recommended as the best value to the district and the low proposer in the amount of $324,870. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions or ask for a recommendation for the approval of 714 laptops from Avanex in the amount of $324,870 using 2021 Bond Funds.
I motion to approve as presented.
A second.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Nolan. Any other discussions or questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Think you're staying up there?
I'm going to stay.
Okay. Brings us to item J2, Consider Approval of the Purchase of Hardware and Software for the Expansion of the Navigation and Student Accountability System from Safe Fleet using the TASB Purchasing Co-op Contract Number 604-20 in the Amount of $67,700 utilizing S.R. 1 Funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. With additional details for item J2 and the purchase of this software and hardware student accountability system, we have our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Amy Dross, and our Director of Transportation, Mr. Hector Silva.
Thank you. So, I'll kind of introduce the process and then turn it over to Mr. Silva, as he'd had most of the heavy work in this particular process. But our Transportation Department has a GPS or a tracking system that's utilized internally. They have been testing it in the way of student accountability, but in order to use that K through 12 for increased safety and other purposes, we did need it on 50 additional buses, as well as additional licenses. So, we were able to earmark some remaining S.R. 1 funds that we could utilize for this project, so not totally at one time, but really all we have is the maintenance and licenses that continue beyond one year from now. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Silva, and he can kind of describe the system to you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. Hello, board. So, in essence, what we are talking about is what some vendors and some districts use as tracking. We prefer to use the word accountability, because this way, we're going to be looking at basically on the spot, real time, when a student boards the bus, when a student disembarks, where they disembark, and then the parents will also have an app that they can download based on the student's ID number, and then they will get the notices that their children have either entered the bus or exited the bus. This is a system that, in my 32 years in this vocation, finally, transportation, school transportation, is coming into the 21st century. I mean, I digress, but when I started as a bus driver, you were handed the keys, and you were told, pick up Mike on Elm Street, and he'll tell you where to go. And so, this is really going to make our life a lot easier. It'll account, obviously, and it'll be a lot safer for our small children, especially at the beginning of the year, when, if a parent's not there, the software will let us know that that child should not be released on their own. On the latter years, the secondaries, we have issues with sometimes the kids not getting off where they need to be or where they should be, and so this will also alert the bus driver that that child should not get off at that stop. In essence, the system integrates completely with other modules in our system, such as routing, which will help our drivers, like I said, with the navigation aspect. So, hopefully, we're very close to the days where the bus driver, especially a sub-driver, will now be reading left, rights, directions, and driving at the same time, which we've done forever. We'll have a GPS system that will tell the driver which way to go, just like in the real world, like we do with our phones. So, in essence, that is the information. If I miss something, I'm here to answer any questions.
So, having had a kid get on the wrong bus one day, I really love this, and you guys took excellent care of her and me, so thank you, but I really like this. So, I move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nolan, and a second by Ms. Hall. Could y'all let me know next?
No, you're welcome.
Y'all can hold on.
I'll comment then. Mr. Dross, didn't you say that the badges for the system would also help with food services?
Yes, so our plan at least at elementary school is to utilize the badges that the elementary students have that ride the bus. She would also get a card reader so that they can scan in for their breakfast in the morning. More importantly, for breakfast, lunches, the children come in in class sets, so it's a little bit easier, they can pull the class roster, but in the morning, they come in at all times, and so it's going to be used by food service as well, same cards.
Excellent.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Nolan, second by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That will bring us to item L, Executive Session. L1, The Board Will Meet in Executive Session to Conduct a Closed Meeting to Deliberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property, because the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. Executive Session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberation regarding real property closed meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.0742, the Texas Government Code. We'll see y'all back shortly. Hope y'all are all here. All right, we are back in session, and we are adjourned. No response.